Okay, I'm going to call this Planning Commission meeting to order October 15th. Welcome, everyone. Are we good? Can you hear me? Okay, awesome. All right, we're going to go ahead and have our flag salute by Commissioner Solis.
Please stand.
That's okay.
Please throw your hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. And roll call Denise.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
And Chair Turley Trejo. We have one excused absence from Commissioner Watts.
And I am here. And do we have any public comments on non-agendized items?
We have none on non-agenda.
I will skip that part. So our consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Our first item is to approve action minutes of October 1st.
I'll move to approve the action minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob Hagel and a second by Mark Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried, then to our business. Members of the public may address the commission on business items that appear on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Were you going to say something?
Yes, just said what was just read is with respect to the public hearing items. We do have one item under business, which is item number two.
Okay, it's on the agenda under business, what I just read.
We want to move, oh, I'm sorry, we want to move item three up. Sorry, I apologize for that. So we want to move item three up so it can get continued in case there's anyone here for that item so they understand that that's not being heard at tonight's meeting.
Okay, all right. We'll come back to number two. All right, so number three, and this is in our public hearing. So do I need to read the public hearing or not at this time because we're continuing this one?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so this is planning application numbers PA 23-0327. An amendment to the Red Hawk specific plan to allow wedding and special event center associated with the golf course and add related standards for those uses. PA 23-0251. A conditional use permit to allow a wedding event center to be operated as part of the existing golf course between the hours of noon and 9:00 PM, no more than three days per week. The project is located at 45100 Temecula Parkway within the Red Hawk specific plan. Hi, Eric.
Hey, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So for the benefit of the audience, we're going to continue this item to a date certain. I know you've shown up for this to speak on this tonight, but currently we don't have a quorum due to a potential conflict of interest for two of our commissioners. So therefore, we're going to continue this item until Commissioner Watts is back, which we anticipate would be November 19th. So, sorry for the inconvenience, but due to the lack of quorum, we have to continue the item. We do have your speaker slips. Can they speak tonight?
So yes, so what we'll need is a, the public hearing to be opened. If anyone wants to speak and doesn't want to come back November 19th, you can certainly speak tonight. Or if you want to come back November 19th, once you've had an opportunity to hear the whole presentation, you can do that as well. And then after anyone has spoken, we would need a motion to continue to November 19th.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone that has put in a speaker card would like to come up and speak, come on up.
First speaker, David Akiba.
He wants to come back.
Okay, perfect. Oh, and Stacy Akiba, so two slips. We'll see you on the 19th.
Well, Stacy wants to speak.
Oh, Stacy wants to speak.
Can I, so I don't have to speak on the 19th?
Yes, you can.
Absolutely.
Matt, can I get that speaker card just so I have it, please?
Good evening.
Just make sure you talk right into the mic. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Stacy.
Yes, good evening. I'm here because I live close to the Red Hawk Golf Course clubhouse area that they have now, where everyone, you know, parks and...
Speak right into that mic.
Right now, they have operated this facility without respecting the rights of the neighbors, in my opinion, with regard to their right to quiet enjoyment of their property.
And I'm so sorry to interrupt. I really apologize to interrupt. It occurs to me that the two members that have a conflict should not be in the room for this portion, so I'm going to ask those two members to leave so you can speak, and then we won't have a quorum on the item. But you can still, we'll let you speak so you don't have to return, but you can always, you're welcome to come back November 19th. But they will not be able to participate in this decision, so I'm going to ask...
Okay. I understand.
So this is just so you have the benefit of not having to come back, and it'll be part of the record.
I appreciate it. I appreciate that. It won't be long. I just, that's really my objection. Right now, I've lived for about 25 years in the same home, which is the home that I listed there. And they constantly play their music at decibel levels that are uncomfortable for us in the community. And even through windows, my double-glazed windows, I can still hear the music. And they do generally stop by 10, but just as a matter of course, they have events all the time, and they have weddings there already. They have these events all the time. I've seen them, I can see them from my home. And for them to build something even larger and have more people and more noise, it's actually kind of a smaller community around the golf course. We all, a lot of us live right there, right on top of it. And they have events all the time, you know, during the day. But I think building something and inviting even more people and trying to get waivers from things that are trying to protect the people that purchase their property so that they could enjoy the quietude of the golf course in front of them as opposed to just constant noise. And if it increases from, it's many days a week already. And so if it increases to more days, like, okay, the city says it's okay if you make tons of noise on three days a week from 12 to 9, it's still really going to impact our lives for us living on the golf course closer to this clubhouse. It's what I came here to say, and I'd like to not have my rights violated to enjoy my property. Is that, any questions, or is that not part of this?
So this is not a question-answer period, so it's just, the comments will be received, will be part of the record.
Thank you, thank you.
So we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we will need to bring them back?
Is there going to be someone else speaking, or is it just...
I think that was, there were only...
Are there any more speakers on the Red Hawk Golf Course? No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are we good to close the public hearing?
No, so we'll leave the public hearing open, and then we'll need a motion to continue it to November 19th.
I would like to...
Normally, I close a public hearing...
Not if we're continuing to a date certain.
Oh, really?
So we don't have to renotice everything. We can keep it open.
I'd like to make a motion to continue to the next commission meeting.
November 19th.
I'm sorry, November 19th meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solis, second by Hagel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, and I will now close the public hearing. No.
So the public hearing remained open, so we can now, oh, now you're going to go back to business items, number two.
But I closed that public hearing for that.
No, it stayed open.
It stays open until Friday.
Okay. Okay, we're kind of doing things a little bit different tonight. All right, so back to number two, and I've already read that. Am I good with that? Okay. All right, so this is long-range project number, so I think I need to open it again because I closed it.
No.
So this is a business item, not a public hearing item, but there are speakers for it, but it's not an actual public hearing item, so you don't need to actually open the public hearing for it.
Okay. And I wasn't closing it because we were continuing it. I got it. Wow. Okay, all right, item number two, long-range project number LR 25-0362. General Plan Consistency Review for an Amendment to the Fiscal Years 2026 to 2030. Capital Improvement Program, Katie Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting the General Plan Consistency Review for an Amendment to the Fiscal Years 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Program. This is LR 25-0362. Just some background, so Section 65402 and 65403 of State Planning and Zoning Law requires that the Planning Commission review and provide comments to the City Council regarding conformity of the CIP with the adopted general plan. Planning Commission's role is to review the draft capital improvement program and determine if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan. On May 21st of this year, the Planning Commission passed a resolution and made a finding of consistency with the general plan for the draft years 2026-2030 CIP budget sheets, and this consisted of 24 circulation projects, four housing projects, 50 infrastructure projects, 19 parks and recreation projects, and two projects funded by the community facilities district bonds. On September 2nd, City Council held a workshop to review and discuss the fiscal years 2026-2030 CIP priorities, and the following amendments reflect City Council's direction derived from that workshop. So what are the amendments? We're proposing to modify seven existing project budgets. These are the vacant parcel cleanup and beautification, Temecula Creek fencing, Empire Creek improvements, park restroom renovations, expansions, and ADA improvements, the I-15 corridor branding and visioning improvements, city security camera system, and the ADA transition plan We're also proposing to add five new projects to the CIP, and this is the Eagle Source Splash Pad Rehabilitation, Mike Nigar Park Pickleball Conversion, Mercedes Street Sidewalk Project, Santiago Community Garden, and the Citywide Community Wildfire Protection Plan. We're also proposing to add one new project, and this is to the future years projects, and this is in the back of the CIP, so it's not funded yet, but it's the Emergency Operations Staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies in the general plan under the circulation, community design, public safety, and open space conservation elements. And just for the good of the audience, we have received some inquiries from residents regarding this specific project, the La Paz Road widening. It's listed in the future years project list in the CIP, and just for clarification purposes, this has been in the CIP as far back as 2018. It is not funded. We don't plan to change that, it's just remaining in there. What we're doing tonight is we're just performing a general plan consistency review with the amendments, so this does not even include the La Paz Street widening, so we just want to get that on the record for everybody. And I also have an example here on this slide. This is what an actual funded project looks like. So as you see on this slide in red, this is just listed under future years projects, and this is what a funded project looks like. To close it out, our secret determination based on the amendments and the consistency review is exempt, so it's not a project as defined by Secret Guideline Section 15378B4, and is exempt under Secret Guideline Sections 15061B3 and 15262. And our staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution making a finding of consistency with the general plan for the amendment to the fiscal years 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Program. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions, and Ron from Public Works might be able to answer some project-specific questions as well.
Thank you, Katie. I'm going to start over here, am I right? Mark, you have some questions for Katie?
Only briefly. Katie, thanks for the presentation. Briefly, item one, vacant parcel cleanup and beautification. Can we say who, have we identified how many parcels we intend to look at under that item?
So from my understanding, the budget is being pulled from that item, but Ron might be able to explain what that used to be budgeted for.
Yeah, that was just a budget item for our vacant parcels that we have around the city, but at this time, through the CIP workshop that we ended up having just a couple of months ago, that funding is being pulled to be put to use elsewhere, and so we won't be doing any vacant parcel cleanup under this item. We'll be doing it under our capital program.
Very good, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Fernando.
No questions.
Bob? No? Okay. And I asked all my questions from Katie before, so thank you, Katie. And we will go ahead and bring up our speakers that would like to speak at this time. So I have Mark Laterno. Mark, would you still like to speak? Okay, welcome.
My name is Mark Laterno. I've lived in Temecula since 2000. I know that this has already been identified. Thank you for clarifying that the item is only on the future years projects, that it's not currently a funded project. We'd like to see that removed from the future years projects so that we don't have to come down here every month and remind the members that we're against widening the La Paz Street between Temecula Parkway and Inez Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Our next speaker, Elizabeth Barcade?
Yes.
Barcade, no? Okay. Lee Rosu? Did I say that right?
It's good.
Good enough?
Not the important part.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Hi, welcome.
I wanted, actually, I came for the same project that you explained. When I read that in the agenda, it looked like an acceleration of the whole widening that starts on north, Santiago goes to La Paz and then continues on La Paz, so that's how I read that. And I wasn't sure how to read that, knowing that for the last three to five years, we've been attending these meetings between traffic commission, planning commission, city council meetings, and we just attended the general plan commission meetings. And we kept on saying that that's not something that's going to help our community, it's just going to be more traffic to our community. Even four lanes is not going to be enough. Google Maps and Waze are going to see that opportunity and route more traffic through the community. So it's only this decision to widen will just destroy our community and achieve nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Eric McKilson? McKillison?
It's okay.
Okay, wow, maybe I can't read your writing. It might not be my fault. Just saying.
That is definitely true. I am a doctor, so there you go.
There you go.
Nice to meet you, Madam Chair, Chairperson, people. Thank you very much for having me. I'm here on the same project. My wife and I, Dr. Rosenberg, live on Deportola, and I just want to just quickly take a moment of your time asking you to please remove this item from the future plan, if we could. Los Ranchitos was established, community was established in 1966. That was 59 years ago. And when it was established and it was engineered, it was engineered with 67 driveways that enter and exit that strip of thoroughfare. And I think if we were to engineer that program today with a residential community on either side of four lanes, we wouldn't have, the number would be zero. We wouldn't have one driveway going in and out of there. And I want to bring that to your attention because of the safety factors that we experience on a day-to-day basis as we live on Deportola Road. For example, my wife and I have horses, we're equestrians, and we drive horse trailers on and off. Driving in and out of our driveway is tough enough. I have to stop and wait for my gate to open. While I'm waiting, cars are passing me, and I'm blocking the bike lane. So either I block the driving lane or the bike lane. That's unsafe. To drive a trailer into my driveway, I have to take a very wide turn, and as I'm turning, I have cars passing me on the inside at an excessive speed. That's dangerous. The other thing is, is we did have an accident about three years ago where, in about 10:00 in the morning, a gentleman, non-alcoholic related, was driving an excessive rate of speed, lost control of his vehicle, he hit our corner fence, took out our entire one-ton gate and 40 feet of fence line. And the reason why I bring that up is on the inside of that fence is our garden and our orchard. And who is in that is my mother-in-law and my grandchildren most of the time attending it. And that would be devastating if that increase of speed was to affect us in that way. So I just wanted to bring that up, and thank you guys for that. The last thing, I was sitting here, and I was just looking at the city emblem behind you, and, you know, it says old traditions, new opportunities, but it's got grapes and, you know, grape leaves, and it's got horses on there, too. And that's really been an essential part of our community, has been the equestrian lifestyle. Our equestrian community was established 59 years ago, and I don't think it's fair to change it just because we need to get people through there faster. It's a residential community, myself, my grandkids, my mother, and my parents-in-law, we're all in there, and we're, many times, I'm afraid to bring the trashcans out to the curb because it's going so fast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next speaker, Luis Todd? Louis Todd? Everyone's laughing at me when I say their name. Louis.
You got the last name correct, yep.
Oh, wow.
Louis Todd.
Okay.
Good evening, planning commissioners and city staff. My name is Louis Todd. My wife and I live at 30110 Deportola Road in Los Ranchitos. We moved to Temecula 39 years ago and have supported many of the changes in our city. I've spoke at most of the different meetings, from the GPAC meetings to the Planning Commission meeting to the Traffic Safety Commission meeting. As a current Los Ranchitos HOA Board President, we are requesting that the Planning Commission recommend the removal of one item. 2026 through 2030 CIP, Capital Improvement Program, Future Years Project, under the heading circulation. Second item, La Paz Street Widening from Inez Road to Temecula Parkway. The street, La Paz, is one of our many horse crossings that is not signalized, and adding more lanes would make the crossing unsafe. The Planning Commission servicing as the designated planning agency for the city of Temecula reviews and makes recommendations on items just like this. Please help protect the old traditions of Temecula and one of the oldest residential communities in Temecula by recommending removal of this specific project at La Paz Street Widening from Inez Road to Temecula Parkway. My wife and I, we raised two sons here in Temecula, and we're fortunate to have our first grandchild. And as I've spoke before, the City Council in the past and other groups, it's unsafe to let our granddaughter play in our front yard because of traffic. And I'm asking you to remove the La Paz side of it because I live on Deportola in Inez, and we know what the future plans are in the circulation element. And the fact that we got a six-day notification that this meeting was taking place on this particular subject item is really not adequate notification to the homeowners that are being impacted by decisions that you guys are making. Even if it is future, it would be nice to get earlier notifications so that we could bring more of our homeowners here to represent our association, because we're all united 100%. We're trying to protect our quality of life and the safety of us being able to enjoy our actual yards. And so we would ask that you take the opportunity to do what you have the authority to do, is make a recommendation for that future item to be removed. Otherwise, we have to continue to look at every single plan that the city does, every single week, to be assured that we're standing in front of you folks so that you can make the decision at that time. Doesn't seem really fair to us, right? It really isn't fair. And so we support a lot of things. We're in support of the improvement project that you guys have in this particular packet that impacts our association on the corner of Santiago, which looks like a sandlot or construction lot right now. We would ask, in that particular case, that you guys work with the HOA to make sure that you meet, you know, our needs as well, considering it is in our HOA. And so imagine, imagine if you lived in our neighborhood and your street ran in front of your house at 45 miles an hour and now 40 miles an hour. Would you think it's safe to enter or exit your own driveway, let alone having your grandchildren come over? I ask that you really consider removing this tonight before it goes before the City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jennifer Rosenberg.
I'm sure you're sick of hearing the same thing over and over again with this, but I am an equine veterinarian, so I bring a little different spin to it, and I've had the honor of kind of working on some of the equestrian trails through our neighborhood. With that being said, I have many clients and patients that are in that neighborhood along that road, so I would like to make sure that we're keeping them safe as they're going out on that road. Now, horses in general, yeah, they can be a little, have a little mind of their own, right? So, but if we're widening that road, we're increasing our chances of something happening. There's already times where we're trying to cross that road, and cars are bypassing cars that are respecting us crossing the road, and they're coming across the median in the middle to, and almost hitting horses a lot. So please keep that in mind, from veterinarian pleading for the safety of our horses in that way, along with us entering and exiting our driveways. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Theo Becht. Did I say that right?
You did. Most people don't.
Uh, where's the clapping? Welcome.
Hello. I'm new here. I actually just showed up quite recently, and I was talking with the lovely folks behind me, talking about their community, and I think, just seeing how many people are here, you can see everyone's showed up in a show of force. It might have been on the wrong day, but people very clearly care about this issue, and just getting to talk to them, I wanted to present my side of it. I am a delivery driver, actually. I drive that road quite often. It is a bit of a bypass, and I still support what they're saying. I have seen people drive past me when I am obeying the speed limit following the 40 mile an hour, that people don't realize it's dropped, and they go past me at unreasonable speeds. I can see why residents would not want people using that as a shortcut. It's also, as the good doctor mentioned, it's a big part of Temecula culture to have the horses here, especially so close to Old Town, people who are coming to the city. They drive through, they see all these lovely ranch homes who've been here longer than they've been. who've been here longer than the city has been incorporated. I think it's a really important part of culture that should be preserved. And it also serves a secondary purpose. One of the key, key points that I noticed, I was at one of the G-PAC meetings at the Temecula Library recently. A lot of people were calling for more public transit and safe places to use your bicycle or equestrian transit, just anything that's an alternative to the car. And La Paz already facilitates that. I think increasing the traffic of automobiles on that road would be going away from a goal that citizens outside of this residence also support. So I would like to see these roads stay as the lanes that they are at. I would like to see the speed stay at what it's at, if not be decreased, to maintain this residential area. And again, I know that no funding has been designated to this yet, but I hope that that means that we'll just be saving you guys some time in grief having to redirect it to instead perhaps spend that money as a delivery driver. Maybe spend it on making Temecula Parkway a little bit smoother. I know that's a big project. But maybe focusing on making the school buses more accessible so that Margarita doesn't back up when the schools get out, so people aren't so tempted to take that road. I just think that there are better ways to improve the traffic flow in this area rather than just adding more lanes to what's supposed to be a bedroom community. I think there are better ways to spend the city's funding and still meet the needs and requests of so many people in the city. Let me just go over my notes real quick, make sure I've got everything. Oh, yes. And then just to second what the HOA president mentioned, I know we all showed up on the wrong day. I think we would all very much appreciate having a little bit better notification. So we do show up on the right day. You guys will see us at the right time when all the funding is being allocated, knowing a little bit further in advance would be very nice to see. You know, I didn't know until I walked into this door and started talking with people here. So just having a little bit better notification, I think, would be very much appreciated. But thank you guys very much for hearing what I have to say and all the folks behind me, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Theo. Appreciate it. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Did you, would you like to speak on this item? Okay. All right. Katie, hi.
I grew up with her boys, so. We've been to Temecula since mid-'80s. We moved to Los Ranchitos. I was a freshman in high school, so late '90s. So, yeah, the traffic, as everyone already said, it's just, it's already used as a thoroughfare. Any widening of any kind of road there would just completely change the neighborhood. So I know this is not on like tonight's agenda, but yeah, if we can kill it, remove it, whatever we got to do. It's just such a special part of town. It's been that way for so long. And any changes to the roads, or it's already too fast, it would just, it would devastate the neighborhood. So I support all these people here and thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming and speaking.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see you. All right. We're not going to close any public hearing because we don't have a public hearing. This is a business item. And Katie or Matt, would you like to speak to this at all, please?
Yeah, so tonight's item is regarding the CIP workshop held by the City Council. The action you're taking tonight is on modifications to seven existing CIP project sheets, the addition of five new ones, and then the addition of a Future Years project for the Emergency Operations Center. So the La Paz widening is listed on that Future Years sheet, which is the cause of some of the confusion. But tonight, you're just making a finding of consistency for those new sheets and those modifications.
Right. I understand that. With them.
With regard to the widening, let me just clarify. We understand and hear your concerns. We appreciate your coming out tonight. The process for addressing the four lanes is going to be through the General Plan Update and through the General Plan Advisory Committee. So I know some of you spoke at the last meeting. The next G-PAC meeting is on November 13th and specifically, we'll be addressing mobility and circulation. So there is a process for that. We'll be engaging the G-PAC, but also Los Ranchitos in a very transparent way to talk about the future. The, specifically La Paz and Inez, that has been identified for four lanes since the last General Plan in 2005. So when it's in there, it's identified in the circulation element. And then every five years, we do CIP sheets. And we've, we've heard what you've had to say. That's why it's been moved to Future Years and all funding's been taken away. So there is a process. And that is going to be through the General Plan Update. So I would encourage you, when you see an item like this, just to give us a call beforehand so we can help clarify and, you know, be efficient with your attendance at the meetings.
Matt, can I add? The meeting will be at 6:00 PM on that November 13th. It'll be at 6:00 PM. And it will be at the Conference Center right here across from the Civic, from the.
I think the point being, it's not something we can remove from the General Plan tonight. I think that's where we have to be really clear.
You can't make a recommendation to remove that from the General Plan tonight, that what you're taking action on.
Right. Got it.
The seven mods, the five new sheets and the one addition.
And consistency with the General Plan is the, what's before you tonight.
Right. Just want to make that clear to the audience that that's not a choice we have to do tonight. Okay, so any discussion from my colleagues regarding this item? I'll start with Bob.
No, as far as I heard what they all had to say and I've heard it before and I appreciate that. Other than that, I don't have any objection to anything that's, that's, that's being asked to be changed.
Okay. Fernando?
Oh, no comments.
And Mark?
My questions were answered by Katie and Director Moreno.
Okay, all right. So we need a motion on this item? Anyone?
Yeah, I want to, I want to make a motion, but make a motion for the Planning Commission to make a finding of consistency with the General Plan for item number two. Like to make a motion?
LR25-0362, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Fernando, a second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, everyone, though, for coming. Appreciate your passion for this. We understand it. I can't, you can't say anything from there. Sorry. You can say goodnight. All right. Okay. So if you have a question, you can wait until after the meeting. That item has finished. So you can wait until after the meeting. Okay, so we are going to go to item number four. Long-range project application number LR25-0123. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Chapter 17 of the Temecula Municipal, I'm saying it in Spanish, Municipal Code regarding off-premises sign standards and make a finding of exemption under California Environmental Quality Act. Are you here for Eric?
I am.
Okay. Hi, Brandon.
Good evening.
All right.
Chair and the Planning Commission. Tonight, we're going to be presenting, as mentioned, an ordinance of the City Council dealing with off-premise sign standards. So the background on this is the city's municipal code regulates signs. Commercial and non-commercial signs specifically have been placed in the public right-of-way over the past years and become an increasing challenge due to lack of clear requirements or things being written in legalese. And so as a part of feedback from the community, we wanted to address that, make sure that this was extremely clear for everyone that would be involved with any type of signage. Currently, election signs are classified as non-commercial off-premises signs, so they would be included in this update as well. And the election period process for election signs generally is 90 days prior to and 14 days after an election period. In terms of enforcement with this, staff, over the last few years, with the special elections, school board elections, national elections, we've been experiencing more issues where there's a plethora of signs in the public right-of-way and other places where they're just not safe. So as an example of that, this is a code enforcement vehicle about 9:15. The officers are in here in the morning. This is about 9:15 during election season and all the signs that are in places they shouldn't be in the public right-of-way. Medians hanging from trees all over the place. So all these places, they're not supposed to be. And that's that same vehicle like an hour later, basically. So the signs in the right-of-way have gotten a bit out of control during that time of year and really throughout the year. As the current section exists, it talks about the maximum number of signs per parcel. There's no limit on signs. The specific election sign information that I just mentioned, the 90 days prior to and 14 days after the election is all something that's in the current municipal code. And we just want to provide clarity. We're not looking to remove the ability of anybody to post-election signs. It's really to clarify the municipal code. There's a few minor tweaks and we'll outline those in just a minute. So again, this isn't just about election signs. This is about all non-commercial off-premises signs. There's a few things we're looking to update here. The maximum sign area shall not exceed 12 feet. Again, that's consistent with the existing municipal code. The maximum height, you'll see we added these very simple titles to make it easier for the public and candidates and other folks to read that they understand what each section means and they can get to it quickly. So the maximum height is not to exceed six feet, but we do have changes of, or about signs located on non-window, non-door window surfaces. And then illumination, again, that was already in the municipal code. We're just adding this very simple title that says, you can illuminate it. Additional proposed amendments in terms of location and safety requirements, again, these bullets, these first few bullets I'll go through, they're all consistent. We're just making sure the language is clear. So you can't put a sign on someone's property if you don't have permission from them. That's nothing new. You can't put signs on public property or any portion of the public right-of-way. That's nothing new. We're adding information on the next bullet in terms of adding governmental direction signs. We don't want those obscured. Obviously, we want people to get safely to government facilities. You still can't block vehicular pedestrian traffic. That's consistent with the existing municipal code. And then we add additional information that talks about marring, defacing, disfiguring, or damage public building, et cetera, because that's obviously not something we want, or stop signs being damaged, stapled on, all sorts of things that we've seen over the past election cycles and regular non-election cycles as well. In terms of additional amendments, the sign shall be located a minimum of 12 inches. This is a new introduced amendment. This just clarifies a general practice that you shouldn't have one election sign that's just a continuous election sign like a billboard to meet the intent of the ordinance. And then we are also proposing to update the ending period of the election period to be 10 days instead of 14 days, which is more consistent with our neighbors in surrounding communities. Additional proposed amendments, again, this is regarding removal. This is a change. Currently, we have a substantial amount of signs that you can see are stocked in our vehicles. We're having to bring them storm. It's costing a substantial amount of time with doing that. And so the proposed amendment would allow for the removal of any sign in the public right-of-way. This is not talking about private property, this specific section. But if it is in the public right-of-way, it can be removed and destroyed. Any signs that erected on private property, they would go through a more formal abatement process that would notify someone and give them the opportunity to remove them. But I just wanted to be very clear about this proposed amendment for removal. In terms of additional amendments, you'll see another section related to the removal of items that are on private property. And it states exactly what I just mentioned, that it would follow the city's standard abatement process. Again, the current section of the municipal code talks about the removal of signs, emergency removal, and we're just updating that and to be more clear. In terms of removal, again, we're adding another section. We are putting this removal section in multiple places to ensure that there's just an easy way to show our residents, our businesses, potential candidates that if you put it in the public right-of-way, it's going to be removed. So we're just making it consistent and repeating it throughout our municipal code so that there's no ambiguity. We want a fair and a fair process for everyone, whether it's an election or non-election, that they know if it's in the public right-of-way, the sign's going to be removed and disposed of. Again, similar section update related to the removal of signs in private property. This is just making more of a clerical change in terms of our building official often isn't the one making decisions on where signs can be. It's really the Community Development Director, Matt. If there's an emergency hazard, we take emergency-related items very seriously. We don't just say, oh, that sign's right there. We don't like it. It's an emergency. It is a situation where maybe there's a large sign and it could fall on the sidewalk or injure someone. So we take that emergency precaution very cautiously and consult with our attorneys often if we use that provision. Again, non-emergency removal, again, would follow our regular abatement process that already exists. We're just clarifying it and directing people to exactly the section that we utilize for that. Additional proposed amendment costs, if owners are, signs are being removed, the city is incurring costs with us. We do have the ability to recover the costs of storing those signs in the future if desired. And this ordinance reviewed by the Planning Commission, Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee Hegel and Watson on September 3rd, 2025, and the City Council General Plan Ad Hoc Subcommittee Kalfis and Ron on September 9th, 2025. Subcommittees were supportive of the ordinance. And under the California Environmental Quality Act, under Section 15061B3 of the Act, it can be seen with no certainty, with certainty, I'm sorry, that there's no possibility that the code amendments would have a significant impact on the environment. And with that, staff's recommending that the Planning Commission approve the proposed amendments and the sequo exemption. I'm available for questions. And we also have our code manager, Jamie Lenos, here, if you have specific questions about enforcement.
Thanks, Brandon. All right, questions of staff? I'll start down here. Fernando?
I have a question. What do you consider the area of the signage, like where the HOA, like when someone drives into a community and that signage area, kind of that corner? It's not the public right-of-way, but what do you, what do you call that area?
That would be considered private property in the municipal code's perspective, right? It's not public property. It's not an easement provided to the city or any type of public ownership. It's private property. So we would work through the abatement process on HOA areas. In addition to that, a candidate or a business or anybody else should be obtaining permission from the HOA to utilize their property and get permission from them.
Oh, I got it. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
No, I just want to say that I think it does affect sequo. It makes a much cleaner environment.
Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I had the benefit, as you said, of sitting on the Subcommittee for this, so this isn't news to me. But I wonder, Brandon, could you refer back to slide 12 for just a moment? I wanted to talk about the distinction between emergence, shoot, 13? There it is. Thank you. So we do, we will sort of have is, is, Jamie, are you still going to have like a sign lockup?
Yes, we will still have our sign storage area.
Okay. Why do we, why do we draw the distinction?
Sign jail.
Sign jail, that's right. But there's a chance for parole, right? If they can come to pick them up.
There is.
But, so we're not throwing away the key necessarily, but why did we draw the distinction on emergency removal versus just a general nuisance abatement?
Excellent question. There's, there's two parts here. So remember, it's that very big distinction on private property versus public property, right? So in the public property, that is in the right-of-way. That's on city property. It's not authorized to be there. The city has not provided permission. We were removing it, right? This is for private property. So this would be, let's say, let me give you an example, a perfect example. Let's just say someone erected a very large sign. It was on an HOA easement, maybe, and they didn't have permission. And we could see that it was tilting over and it was going into the sidewalk. And we've got storms coming or maybe a storm knocked it over, right? And we can see that there's an imminent safety issue. We would remove that sign because it's an emergency issue. It could be it's blocking visibility for traffic because it fell over. It could be something where it's going to fall on someone or it's near a school, could fall on kids. That's the only time we would use this emergency provision. And as I mentioned earlier, anytime we use an emergency provision, my first call is to Maricela and say, hey, does this meet the constitutional emergency, you know, barometer that we need to do this? And she consults with us, sends a photo. Is that, why are we doing this? So that's the only time we're going to use this is under an emergency situation, not just because we don't like the sign.
Solid. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Do we have any comments on this item?
We have received no comments.
Okay. All right. So do we have any discussion at this time? I actually wanted to say something about it. Since I ran for an elected office three years ago, this was near and dear to my heart. And, yeah, we had, you know. And yeah, we had, you know, I like this because I think it's more important for candidates to be able to put signs in personal property, people that they've talked to who really want them as a candidate. And that's really what we focused on in our campaign instead of just putting them everywhere. But anyway, so I think it's good for any kind of sign. So I, I am in favor of this. Any other comments before we make a motion? All right. Looking for a motion.
I will move item, what was the number, four? Adopt a resolution to?
LR2.
LR250123.
A second.
All right. Motion by Bob and a second by Fernando, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carried. All right. Moving to item number five, long range planning project number LR24-0090, amending titles five, eight, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code as detailed in the proposed ordinance. Mark?
Good evening.
Welcome. Oh, we get you down there.
Good evening. Yes, figured it'd be easier to get your shots if I'm straight on, so. I was just not feeling tip-top, didn't want to plague anyone else up there, so stay down here. As mentioned, this is LR240090. This is a non-storefront medical cannabis delivery service, also known as SB 1186. So a little bit of a refresher, I know most of you have heard or seen this before, but the Medical Cannabis Patients' Right of Access Act was signed into law in September 2022 by the governor and became effective of January 2024. So in what SB 1186 does essentially is it preempts a jurisdiction from adopting or enforcing any regulation that prohibits or unduly restricts medical cannabis patients or their caregivers' access to medical cannabis through delivery. So in short, we have to allow one non-storefront medical cannabis delivery service. Currently, our code preempts such business and this is why we're doing this amendment. So, and April 9 of this past year, council members received a briefing on the details and requirements of SB 1186 and directed staff to prepare an ordinance. We prepared that ordinance and we're presenting it to you tonight. A little bit of a framework for you, you have the whole ordinance in front of you. I won't get too nitty-gritty with you, but kind of broken down into four sections, the first being licensing and permitting requirements, the second being the zoning, third being security and operations, and fourth being the imposition and collection of applicable taxes. Licensing and permitting, this would be an annual medical cannabis delivery permit, very similar to our massage or tobacco permit. Didn't want to reinvent the wheel. These seem to be working on those businesses, so we'll just keep it going. This would be administratively issued and more importantly, administratively revocable. So if anyone doesn't follow their Ps and Qs, staff can revoke it without any hearing or anything to that nature. Also, they would need a business license and a certificate of occupancy, which is required of all businesses in the city. Nothing new. For zoning, it would be light industrial zoning only with a 500-foot separation from sensitive receptors, residences, daycares, churches, schools, everything like that. If you see here, the teal color is our light industrial zoned properties, there are two blue parcels that are highlighted on the Uptown area. Those are not industrial, nothing cannabis-related could go in Uptown. But those teal parcels could potentially support a use such as this. Keep in mind, I don't think Abbott's going to be getting into this business anytime soon, so don't think it'll be on the other side of the 15. For security and public health, our operational requirements, we're going to require a security plan be submitted with the application, and this will have security personnel, monitored alarm, cameras, et cetera, all the requirements that we want to see in their security plan. We're going to require scheduled and unscheduled inspections by RSO staff and code enforcement. We're going to require no onsite ordering, sales, pickups, giveaways, et cetera. And we're going to have it require an odor control plan. This stuff can get a little odoriferous, if you will, so we'll make sure that no one else around has to endure that. And then also, we're going to have screening requirements, and we're going to have limited signage and advertising on the building and delivery vehicles. There's some other loud vehicles floating around Riverside County. Taxes. Medical cannabis is not subject to standard sales tax, being a medical product, and the city may implement a tax. It is not proposed in this action. Just a little bit of, if we want, if the city wanted to, it could be done by a voter-approved tax at the ballot box or by way of a development agreement. This is not appropriate for an administrative permit, which is why we aren't doing this here. This is staff-level permit. We don't need to have any type of discretionary action. So just a bit about non-compliance. This law went into effect in January of 2024, so any businesses could have come in between now and then and applied for this and just had to abide by state rules versus ours. So it would allow such businesses to comply with state only, avoiding all of our zoning and requirements. And it would allow greater than the number of stores we would allow under this ordinance. And then it also could open us up to potential legal action by an applicant or the attorney general, depending. Where we've been and where we're going, August 19, we briefed Mayor Pro Tem Alexander and Councilmember Ron. September 3, the PC Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee, Commissioners Hagel and Watson, were there for that. September 22, Councilmember Schwenk was briefed. September 23, Mayor Kalfis and Councilmember Stewart were briefed, and then we are before you today on October 15. For sequo, staff has determined that this project is exempt from further environmental review per guideline Section 15060C2 and 15061B3. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the proposed resolution recommending the city council adopt the proposed ordinance. This completes my resolution and I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to start with Bob. Questions of staff?
Just one question. What, what state licensing is required of a business like this?
They will get a Class 9 license from the Department of Cannabis Control, and that is the only license type that is supported by this use.
So they, there's no medical, you know, medical licensing then?
This is a medical license.
That is a medical license.
It's only medical. You can't get recreational from this. You have to have your medical card, which is what makes this a tax-exempt product. It's a medical product.
Do you know if you're issued that license, are you then not, is, is a regular cannabis license available to you?
Not in the city.
Not in the city.
We, we do not allow commercial cannabis. This is our one kind of exemption to it because it's medical. But as far as commercial cannabis, where you see in some other cities around here, you can walk up, buy your stuff and be on your way, that's not going to happen here.
So our ordinance, if they try to cheat and get another license, our, our ordinance would, would not allow that to happen then?
Correct.
Okay.
If they got another license, they could perhaps expand and go into another city, but they could not open anything here.
In there, yeah. Okay.
Fernando? So I saw the map. Can you go back to that map of how many potential locations?
These are potential locations that meet the zoning requirements, but there's only one that we have.
There's only one applicant.
Correct.
So in order for an applicant to be successful and get this permit, they would have to, one, get a building only in that specific areas?
Correct.
And then number two, abide by all the rules that we will impose, right?
Yes.
And then, and there's limitations on delivery too, right?
There's limitations on delivery in the fact that it has to go to a medical cannabis patient or their caregiver, but there's no limit on the amount or the number of deliveries that it can have. It being a medical product, we look at it the same as Tylenol, as whatever your doctor's prescribing you. We're not going to get between you and the doctor telling you what you need.
Right. And there's, so there'll be one location, one business only?
Mm-hmm.
And how many cars are allowed to be, like how many mobile vehicles will be allowed for the business?
We don't have a limit. That would be limiting, potentially limiting their patients' access to cannabis. Kind of a slippery slope there.
Okay. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some strong feelings about this one, and I'm certainly going to come out against it. I don't want anybody to wait for, for that. You'll figure it out when you hear what I have to say, I suppose. But I've done a lot of research into this. I have the, have had and enjoyed the benefit of wise counsel from our deputy city attorney and our director of community development. But again, my concerns persist. So I put together a few notes, and I've certainly tried to be brief with my other comments tonight, but I, I want to go clearly on record as to my concerns for this. So I'll, I'll get through these as efficiently as I can.
This is time for questions, though. So if you have questions of staff?
Okay. I do, actually. Sorry, I'll come back to that. I apologize. If, let me ask, and this may be best directed to you, to our deputy city attorney, Maricela, but if, if we did not allow this and later an applicant came along and said he wanted to put an, put a, an establishment on Front Street, would we be bound by current code to do that?
So by the current code, it would be prohibited, but if the city were sued, that would be the issue because it's, there, we don't have a provision of allows the establishment of a physical premises within the city to allow for these delivery businesses to operate. And so if the city were sued, a court could find that they could establish somewhere within the city.
What would our recourse be, do you imagine, if we're dealing in hypotheticals like that? What would our recourse be if somebody did sue or, or there was a threat of a suit or we denied an application to put one in? Would, would the city conceivably have time to get through Planning Commission and around a city council to get us designating this in the, the light industrial zone?
I mean, think in a world of hypotheticals, potentially, I don't know what a court would determine if, whether the court would abide by what the city does after the fact.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I do have a question, Mark. So you were talking about that, so this storefront would only be for medicinal cannabis, correct?
Delivery cannabis, yes.
Delivery, right? So they can't make it onsite? This is just for delivery?
And it's non-storefront, just to be clear.
Okay.
So it's a delivery-only model. Someone cannot walk into door to purchase.
It's a building, no. It is a building. It is a building.
Yes.
Okay. So how, how can we in reality monitor this, that this is medicinal only?
We would, in the ordinance, we have the ability to inspect their books and inspect their records. As a cannabis retailer, they have to verify if they're selling a tax-exempt product. They have to verify that they're selling to a medical, a medical patient. If they don't have that record, then we could get them and we could take away their license or take away their permit to operate.
Okay. So, okay, so if, if this passes tonight, how would we, what would be the process? How would we really do this? If someone asks for a permit for a non-storefront delivery service, would we go out and inspect it on, you know, on a regular basis?
Yes.
How would we really enforce this?
Yes, we have inspections built in there in time. I believe it is quarterly. I could be mistaken in there, don't quote me, but we have regular inspections built into the ordinance, and we also have any unscheduled inspections if we get a complaint. If someone says, hey, my son isn't a medical patient and he got delivered from this place, we would go and inspect and see what's going on, and we have, would have access to their books and verify everything.
Can you show me where that is in the ordinance?
Yes.
It's Section 5.26.090.
Thank you for the save.
A medical cannabis delivery service may be inspected at any time following a reasonable notice for the purposes determining that the provisions of this chapter are met. Section, inspections may be made by the police department, persons employed by the city whose job descriptions require the person to enforce the provisions of this code, including but not limited to code enforcement officers and such other enforcement officials as described in Section 1.16020 and 1.21.020 of the Temecula Municipal Code or its successor session, session, excuse me, sections. And then if there's complaints, then there can be inspections without notice. That's subsection B. And then subsection C talks about the requirement to maintain accurate books that can also be inspected.
So in this, I'm reading that they would have to have reasonable notice that you're coming to inspect, correct?
Unless it's based on a complaint. If it's based on a complaint, it can be done without, if there's a complaint about a violation, then the inspection can be done without any notice. It's only kind of your routine annual inspections that for any other business in the city would typically give notice for annual or quarterly inspections.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions of staff that have come up?
I do have one more question. What are, do you, do you happen to know what other cities are handling, like the neighboring cities?
Neighboring cities are handling this a little bit differently. Cannabis has kind of evolved since it passed. Some cities that were against it are now embracing it. Others are maintaining kind of the status quo as Temecula is, just kind of doing what we have to do per the state. I know other cities are allowing it a little bit in greater, we're being very stringent with our ordinance and other cities are being a little bit more open with it as far as their access and what they allow. We don't allow growing. We don't allow onsite sales. We don't allow packaging. We don't allow anything outside of what is stipulated in state law. And then we try and keep that short, that leash very short.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Bob, any other questions? Okay. Mark, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comments?
We have received none.
Okay. All right. So let's have some discussion at this time with commissioners, and I'm going to start over here on this end. Do you have, have anything you would like? We're not going to make any motions yet, just as this is just discussion.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment that I, I can appreciate that this is a very strict type of ordinance that we have to pass, I mean, or have to abide by state law. And after looking at interviewing it, there's only one location. I think, I think we're doing the best that we can.
Okay. Bob?
I heard some discussions in city council several years ago. A gentleman who had cancer spoke about how difficult it was for him to get his, his medical cannabis and that it had to be delivered 20, 30 miles away and how expensive it got to be, and asked if, if they, you know, the city would allow it. And there was several other people that spoke that also needed it. All of them were cancer patients. All of them had lots of pain problems that could not be resolved in any other way, that the drugs that they were taking were much, much harsher and, and actually could be fairly deadly. So I can understand, you know, the need for this. I think one per city is pretty much all you need, and I would be supportive of this, particularly since we don't have any choice.
Mark?
Thank you. I'm sorry I jumped the gun there before. So in, to move things along, I prepared some, some remarks of my thoughts and comments on this because, as I said, I feel pretty strongly about it. Pardon me. I have some fundamental concerns regarding this agenda item that would, if approved by this body and ultimately the Temecula City Council, stand to usher in a brick and mortar cannabis operation, albeit non-storefront and delivery, delivery only as presently contemplated. While I do recognize that the legality of the cannabis trade in the state of California is generally a settled matter, I cannot ignore the company that marijuana keeps and the characteristics it shares with other malignant substances. Marijuana is in the same company in the Schedule I Narcotics List, according to the United States Drug Enforcement Agency, as cocaine, methamphetamine, DMT, LSD, peyote, ecstasy, molly, mushrooms, and a list of others, all of which, according to the USDA's, share the same detrimental characteristics. Number one, the listed drug or substance on the Schedule I Narcotics List has a high potential for abuse. Number two, the listed drug or other substance has no currently accepted medical treatment in use in the United States. Number three, the listed drug or substance has a lack of accepted safety for use under medical supervision. Adding to my concern is the fact that persons as young as 18 years old with a $50 application fee can apply for and receive with near certainty medical marijuana cards featuring qualification threshold, thresholds as low as anxiety. When we talk about the premises mandate, Senate Bill 11286 prescribes that the establishment of physical premises from which retail sale by delivery of medical cannabis within the of physical premises from which retail sale by delivery of medical cannabis within the jurisdiction is conducted by a licensed non-storefront seller, except that this paragraph shall not be construed to require the establishment of additional physical premises. And I think that's the crux of where I'm finding a disagreement with this, which relies, I think, Mark? Oh, Mark's back there, sorry. Yeah, no, no, come up, but on Mark's premise, about the taking one or allowing one. My interpretation of that text is admittedly lay. Still, in my opinion, it seems to rely on assumptive reasoning to conclude that a cannabis operation must be allowed. By way of example, the city of San Marcos, in its ordinance 2023-1535 cited the provisions of California's Senate Bill 94, which is a trailer bill known as the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, MAU-CRSA, stating in part, this is the city of San Marcos, stating in part that the MAU-CRSA allowed local governments to continue prohibiting or regulating commercial operations, activities, and uses related to cannabis, including but not limited to adopting and enforcing zoning and land use requirements and other local regulations prohibiting medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis businesses. That's in the city's ordinance. And the city of San Marcos, and that's exactly what they did and have done ever since 2023, successfully prohibit medicinal care, medicinal cannabis, brick and mortar operations in their jurisdiction. I think it's also worth noting that in the intervening years since adopting the ordinance, San Marcos has never been sued for non-compliance with 1186. And while there's no guarantee that San Marcos or we should, our city, deny a medical marijuana business from setting up shop, there's no guarantee we won't face the threat of, or the future threat of litigation to compel some specific performance. But the litmus of first through the door San Marcos appears, at least to me, to mitigate that possibility. Let's see. Unless tonight's agenda item was predicated by litigation or the threat of litigation, the direct threat of litigation, I'm not sure we should be in a rush to get in compliance by allowing a medical medicinal cannabis delivery operation when our city's current stance on another significant facet, I'll hold that thought. Hold on. This is what I meant to say, this is what I meant to touch on. In a matter from 2018 that generally paralleled what we're discussing, the Escondido City Council unanimously passed an ordinance banning all commercial cannabis operations, including deliveries within its city limits. However, that case was ultimately dismissed by Judge McGuire in Fresno, so that was probably a non-starter I want to talk about. But hold on, one second. Clearly, I'd prefer to see no such trafficking of Schedule I narcotics into our city. Nearly there. Commissioner Hagel briefly mentioned this and I wanted to address it as well, since what, what seems to be presently at issue is the process, or rather, the prospect of allowing a delivery-only service. But I don't, I don't believe that an additional five to 10-minute wait time for a delivery from, say, Murrieta would constitute an unreasonable restriction or impingement on a patient's right to access. We're not talking about regulating the delivery of Narcan or AED defibrillators with their emergency life-saving purpose. So I guess in closing, I don't really need to close, I think you know where I stand on this and it probably won't get much traction, but I don't think this is something we have to do. I, and again, that's my lay interpretation. I've gotten access to wise counsel, I just feel differently about the matter. And I think it represents what could be a very slippery slope, that once one is in, others will be too. So I, I do thank you for the indulgence of allowing me to share my thoughts, I feel strongly on this.
No, definitely appreciate your thoughts. I too have been concerned about this in talking with Matt specifically. I think where I landed is if we don't have an ordinance, that someone could actually have something in the Target Shopping Center or anywhere they would want to, since it is legal as of 2024 to be able to do that. So that's my concern, that if we don't locally as a city control this the way that we can, it may be out of our control. So I understand that with San Marcos and I think that's great. You know, that's not guaranteed for us in Temecula. But I too have the same concerns of opening a Pandora's Box, for sure, and wish that this was not something that we are mandated to do. But in my mind, trusting that as a city and our attorneys, that they're keeping us as safe as we can be from being, from litigation and also having a situation that we can't control. And that's my concern, that I want to be able to control it. I wish that we weren't being mandated to do this, of course, along with a myriad of other mandates that we have from the state. So I understand your concerns and I appreciate you researching that and going to all the effort that you have in that regard. So that's kind of where I stand on it. Any other thoughts from my colleagues? Nope?
I'll just say, I, I appreciate Mark's input and I, you know, I share some of the same concerns. I would, I would hate to see the misuse of this. At the same time, there is, there is a use of it. There are people who have tried everything and this is the only thing that works. And now at the time of these conversations, it wasn't available in, in Murrieta, it was only available in Hemet. And it wasn't available by delivery in the city of Temecula. So the person had to go and get it and the person could not go and get it because they weren't allowed to drive. But also, I don't, I'd rather have the city have control of it, as, as you have stated, than if it just appeared. You know, under state law, somebody could open up and maybe we then have to sue them rather than them even suing us to get rid of it. And, you know, our chances of winning that battle might be difficult. But yeah, I don't want to see it open up in the Target Center for sure. So I have, you know, I've got very mixed feelings, but at the same time, it is mandated and I think there is a legitimate need for it. Hopefully, not much of a legitimate need for it. And perhaps we never get any applications.
So does Murrieta have a non-storefront delivery? I mean, not that it matters in our decision-making, but I'm just curious. Wait, you gotta be on the mic.
Yes, Murrieta does, they allow it in their economic development zone. It's a new zoning mechanism they did. They allow cannabis lounges and other things as well, specifically in that area. So they're a little bit wider. We're very stringent, as I mentioned.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, I mean, I think I, I differ from, from Bob in that I don't, I think that people who need it medicinally can certainly get it. I don't think they need that from us to open anything. But unfortunately, I think we're being mandated to do it and I guess in doing it, we haven't had anyone ask for anything at this point, even though it's been legal since 2024, almost two years. So that's good news and hopefully, because it won't be easy necessarily for them to do, that we won't necessarily have a line for that matter. But I think we've probably discussed enough about it, so I think we're ready for a motion or no motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve LR 24-0090.
I second.
So we have a motion by Bob and a second by Fernando. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Nay.
Okay, 3-1 on that. Passes. All right, we're going to go to commissioner reports. Bob, do you have a commissioner report?
I did attend a, the housing workshop and there was, you know, discussion of housing, particularly the RENA numbers, and I don't think that we're going to have any problem meeting our RENA numbers for, at least for the near future. Affordable housing was a large discussion, as well as the general plan update was a discussion. And I think the meeting went very well. I think they got a lot out of it. I think it was a really good discussion and.
Wirth, when did you go to?
This was the workshop in, across the hall, last Thursday.
Oh, for the housing?
You were there, yeah, for housing.
Thank you. Mr. Fernando?
I did attend the general plan meeting that was in the library. It was a good turnout.
The open house?
The open house, there's a lot of, a lot of residents that came.
When you say a lot, how many would you say?
At least 30.
Okay.
And I was there, I think for like.
So that would have been Brendan's district? Is that correct?
Yeah. And it was a good turnout, the consultants were very helpful, a lot of good ideas, they had a, uh, great maps, right? So, so I actually learned a lot of stuff at the meeting, so staff was great and I think it was a good turnout. So I'm glad I went.
All right, Mark?
Only to say that I had the opportunity, when I watched the city council meeting and an item was put up by Mayor Protem Alexander about the Milvet donation program. And I got to go out and I was so moved by the, the noble, the work that they're doing, I had a chance to go to the Milvet offices, meet their founder, CEO, Raven, who was completely welcoming, toured me on the facility, and I was able to pick up three boxes from them and get those filled from, you know, from my employer and they're big, so everybody should be trying to find a box. I think at the October 14th city council meeting, the mayor Protem said that they've gotten 70 or 80 of these filled so far, but if anybody's interested in learning more about it, certainly you can see more details on the city council meeting last night or go to milvet.org.
Thank you. That's great that you did that. I was able to go, I couldn't go to the Red Hawk open house because I was out of town, but I went to the Meadowview one. And Meadowview people are, they're there. I think all of the people that lived in Meadowview were there. No, there were a lot of people. But they were asking really good questions and Brandon did a great job. Brandon and I have been hanging out a lot the last couple of weeks, going to meetings. But yeah, he did a great job and we had, I think, I think what I came away from that is that people want to be heard and they want to have people who have knowledge to answer their questions. And that's what happened. You know, I think it's a great process to be able to do that. Not everybody takes advantage of that, but people who really care about their community and if they, you know, I mean, I do as well. I couldn't go to, like I said, the Red Hawk one, but even going into Meadowview actually was kind of good to see how a different community, how they respond. And of course, council member Stu is there and he's like, love Meadowview people, you know? I don't have to do anything and I get elected. Anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there. But, you know, it's just, there was a real support there for that community and I think that's pretty cool. I also went to the first GPAC meeting this last Thursday, just because I wanted a feel for the committee, the people that had been appointed that, to that committee, because they had many applications. And so to see who had actually been appointed, there were two that were absent, but there were 16 that were there and heard from most of them, so got a good feel for that. So if you haven't had a chance to listen to that meeting, I think it'd be good because we as a planning commission are, will be reviewing what they discuss and we'll be hearing what they discuss. And I think it just gave me a, a pulse on the people who are involved. And I think we need to know those people that are involved and so, so when we get that information, then we can look at it in the way that we need to. So I appreciate Matt and all his efforts in this area. That's a lot of work. I was on the KLP, so I get it. That was a long process and this is, I think, going to be even longer. So hopefully those people are committed to be there to each of those meetings. Okay, do we have any commissioners, subcommittee reports? None? All right. Were there any that you were supposed to be to that you weren't? Just checking, just checking. Okay, Matt?
Thank you. You covered a majority of my updates. I was going to talk about the open houses, the housing workshop and the general plan advisory committee meeting. Sounds like you're all familiar. The train is on the tracks, so to speak. The general plan, we're off and running. So I want to thank a lot of our staff, like Brandon and Katie and Mark and most, most of ComDev were there to help support the consultants in answering questions at all of the open houses, so appreciate that. As you mentioned, a lot of people are showing up. I think the first one was the least attended, but then we gained traction from there. We've done a lot on social media.
And the first one was where?
Was at the MRC.
At the MRC?
Yep. So I think we're averaging.
That would have been Zach's.
That would have been Zach's district. That was the first one. But we'll keep you informed throughout the process. The next meeting, as I mentioned, to the Los Ranchitos folks is November 13th. We're going to be covering circulation and mobility. And as I mentioned previously, when we get to a decision point, a recommendation from the GPAC will then be taking that to the planning commission for additional feedback. So throughout the process, we're going to stress transparency and checks and balances. So.
With that, one thing that a couple of the people said that night that I thought was important is, you know, I was sitting in the.
Audience?
Audience, but I mean, the place that public speakers would sit, right? And there were, there were, it was mostly staff that was there that night. And so, you know, a couple of them were saying, this is, you know, this is where we want to see people come and come to these meetings and give us some ideas and give us their feedback on things. And so I think as commissioners, you know, talking to people, letting them know about the meeting and if they have concerns about mobility in the city, might want to come to the meeting, you know, and, and share your thoughts and things. So I think we as commissioners can also get the word out to people that we know to be there. So I think that would be important. Was there anything else, Matt?
Yeah, another important announcement, it's Ron Moreno's birthday today.
I was going to say that.
Yeah. And I know that there's no place he'd rather be than, than that planning commission tonight. And then.
This is your birthday song. It isn't very long, hey!
That's great. Happy birthday, Ron. My last announcement is just to get this on your radar, I don't know if, Denise, did you leave us at your chairs? So Friday, December 5th, please join us at the VIP tent located at Main and Old Town Front Street. I assume this is for the parade. So this is for the parade, you can sign up for the VIP.
None of us working on a float for a planning commission.
That's great.
That's why you told me.
That's great. And they'll accommodate up to four guests, so if you're interested, please sign up for that. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Thanks for all you do. All right, birthday boy, let's hear from you.
Thank you, thank you all.
I wish I'd known, I would have brought you like a little birthday hat.
I'm sure you would. So we have the hockey rink, if you haven't been by there, that's moving fast.
Very fast.
We want to open that before the end of the year. So you can see that the, you know, trusses are up. I highly encourage you to just kind of swing by. We're hoping for ribbon cutting before the end of the year. The freeway projects are going well. Our CTC is wrapping up the Smart Freeway project. I know you guys have heard about that before. So don't be alarmed when you start seeing, when you start seeing. So don't be alarmed when you start seeing, when you're getting on the freeway, there's going to be some directional signs and some speed signs. It's going to take a little while for the public to get used to it, but we'll probably have some information coming out. But there's going to be more direction as you get on the on-ramps of what you should be doing. And so
What do you mean?
Well
Shouldn't we be driving?
It'll tell you which lane to get in for which speeds. It'll tell you where to go, like if you're going to Murrieta, it'll, it'll tell you to get over, those kinds of things.
This is not going to be distracting.
This is not going to be distracting.
Sounds distracting.
I know. So So
It will drive for you.
It will not drive for you, but there will just be more directional signage about, and also the ramp metering, I know you're used to getting on with ramp meters that, okay, this one goes green, then this one goes green, and then they won't be in that sequence. They'll, the smart freeway will decide when you go. So don't expect you're going to go right away. There's going to be maybe some delays or maybe they let you go immediately.
Wow. Are we excited about being smart or not?
This is a pilot project that is the first of its kind in California. The technology has been utilized in New Zealand and Australia. It's been very successful over there. Our CTC, when we were doing French Valley, asked us to be a pilot program. So we said yes, because they were helping us with our French Valley Phase Two, and so therefore
We were blackmailed.
Therefore, we, we, we said we would be a pilot project, so data is going to be collected over the next year and then it'll be determined how successful and how things are moving.
So if it's not working, we can not do it?
I
Potentially.
Potentially, there would be adjustments. So I just wanted to make sure you understood, because I'm sure you're going to get questions of what are these directional signs? What are these speed limit signs? What's going on here? But it is a pilot project through our CTC. It's not a city project, but it's going to be probably going live a portion of it within the next couple of weeks.
So somebody was asking tonight about the auxiliary lanes. Do you want to talk about that for a minute?
So the auxiliary lanes are getting very close. Caltrans is looking to close the southbound Rancho California Road on-ramp. So that would be, for instance, all of us who work at City Hall, if you're going to go south and you think you're going to go to Rancho California Road and go south, it'll, we're coming up on probably a 55-hour closure of that so that they can pave. So we will let you know. It'll come out on social media. I don't want to give any dates yet due to unforeseen circumstances, rain and everything, but it'll be advertised to the commission, to the council and
So this is the one parallel to the one that's already been done?
Opposite side.
Yeah.
Yes.
So parallel.
Yeah, so it's the one right behind City Hall. It's the aux lane going down. So all those aux lanes, the three that Caltrans is doing, absent the one we already did, those three are going to be done by the end of next year. They're just going to have some intermittent openings, closures and some paving.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for being here on your birthday. Wow! Such dedication.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, so before we adjourn, I also want to, we miss Gary and we hope that he will be back soon. So if he listens to this down the road, we want to let him know that we're all thinking about him and praying for him to be well, be able to come back. We miss him. So we will adjourn until November 5th at 6:00 PM, right here. Don't miss it. The best place to be, as Ron would say. And I'll adjourn this meeting.
Hey, Ron. Do you have a question?